That's all right. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm going to make this announcement now, but also go to make it at the beginning of our, when the full meeting starts, that Mary will not be present this evening. She's at the NACO legislative meeting up in Washington DC. And we're honored that she is the president of the VACA. And we think it's very important for her to be up in our nation's capital. So, that being said, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following: Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. One, the former Blacksburg High School property. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
We're in a closed meeting. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
The first thing I want to do is, you may notice that Ms. Biggs is not with us this evening. In the five years that I've been on the board, I think this is the first time, maybe the second tops, that she hasn't been at one of our meetings. She is the president of VACA, Virginia Association of Counties. And she is in Washington DC at the national meeting, and cannot be with us this evening. And I just wanted to explain to everyone where she was at, and that she is doing the Lord's work, so to speak, up in our nation's capital, trying to make sure that we don't have any unfunded mandates coming down from a federal level being passed to the states, which inevitably falls along our shoulders.
It's a tall order.
Yes.[133.16][133.16](Laughter). Next on our agenda is certification of a closed meeting. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section 2.2, 3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County of Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And what this is, is our Board's word to you, that we're only discussing things in closed matter, closed session, that were supposed to be. That being said, is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
The next item on our agenda is invocation, where we'll observe a moment of silence. And after that, I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge, and I would ask all of us to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Before we have our presentations, I'm going to turn things over to the county administrator. I believe there's someone who would like to introduce.
I would. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to introduce someone in the audience tonight, that's our newest county department head, Ms. Jennifer Harris. Jennifer, if you don't, Jennifer is our new Public Information Director. As many of you may know, Ruth Ritchie, who had been with us for a number of years, retired at the end of December. We had a number of very qualified folks that applied for the position, and we were very fortunate to have Jennifer in that group. Jennifer comes to us from Virginia Tech, and is doing a great job with us so far. I don't, we have, she came back for her second week, so that's always a good sign after the first one.[298.83][298.83](Laughter). But Jennifer, thank you for being here with us tonight. We're glad to have you onboard. And Board members, if you haven't had an opportunity, I'm sure Jennifer would like to reach out to you and talk to you in the next week or so, so be looking for that if you haven't met her already. Thank you, Jennifer.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Welcome, yeah.
The next item is Presentations, Recognitions, and Awards. And first, we have New River Valley Home Consortium Activities. Elizabeth Willis with the Housing and Community Development Project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's not, that's not Elizabeth. Thanks.
(Inaudible). Thank you for having me. I'm actually, my name is Jennifer Willis, and Regional Planner with the New River Valley Regional Commission. And I'm actually standing in for Elizabeth tonight to present to you on an update on the home consortium. So before I begin, I'm going to pass out. Thank you. Thank you. So listed here are our member localities, which represents all of the counties and towns in the New River Valley. And they are represented by our Board of Directors. And in general, we have two representatives from each locality that serve on the Board. Emily Gibson serves for Montgomery County. We thank her so much for her service. So in addition to our Board members, the town of Blacksburg serves as lead agency and fiscal agent. But in addition to that, they contract each year with the New River Valley Regional Commission to serve as staff for the consortium. So therefore, our Board representation and our staff representation give a regional perspective to the work that we do. So the consortium was formed in 2007, which means we are entering into, as of July of this coming of this year, our 10th year. And with these federal dollars, we have rehabbed or built 343 affordable units. And the way that that works is, there is an annual allocation that comes to the New River Valley, and typically, we rotate for each year, a different locality had to turn to use the bulk of that money for one big impactful project, instead of trying to split it out and do a lot of little projects. So most of the time, home funds are not the sole source of funding in our projects. It usually takes multiple sources of funds. And in our case, we have, for every dollar of homes' funds spent, we have leveraged an additional $7.06, which is something that we're pretty proud about. So it's not just those dollars that are coming to us. We're also applying, or the developers of our projects are also applying for other sources of grant funds, or leveraging private dollars as well. So now I'm going to highlight some of the projects that are going on, or have been completed in each of the localities. And if you're looking in your reports, there are more details in the report that passed out. This project is in the town of Blacksburg, and it's called Grissom Lane. It's eight units of rental housing, age restricted for those 55 and older. And these were, are owned and constructed by Community Housing Partners. And they are all affordable units. In Pulaski County, there was a project that just finished up last year, that was used in combination with a community development block grant fund for housing rehab in a town very close to Dublin, or a community very close to Dublin. And they had a million dollars of community development block grant funds, where we rehabbed 15, rehabbed or rebuilt 15 homes in that community. And many of those had home assistance as well, to let those dollars go a little bit further. To give you a frame of reference, $60,000 is the cap that CDBG allows to rebuild a home. And we found, for quality purposes, that was really hard to stick to, so the home funds would come as gap financing, so that we could build a more sustainable house. This project is in the town of Ridge Creek in Giles. And it's a 23-unit rental housing project, for, again, age restricted to those 55 and older. And it was built to be able to provide additional services built in. The units themselves, as you can see here, are just a bedroom and a living space, and then there's common areas for larger hangout space, and then there's a community kitchen where meals and things like laundry are provided. And this, again, is age restricted and income restricted. We partnered with Habitat for Humanity to do a single-family home in the town of Floyd. And this, this project turned out really beautifully. As you know, Habitat has a sweat equity program that goes in with their funding as well. So this family spent, you know, dozens and dozens, hundreds of hours, with all four of them, to chip in and build this home. And it's in town, so it does have public water and sewer. And it is energy efficient. They built it to earthcraft standards. And then finally, this name may be a little bit familiar to you all. This project done with Taylor Hollow Construction in downtown Radford. And it's actually our third project that we've completed with Taylor Hollow in downtown. And their formula is typically a mixed-use downtown, housing in the upper story, and then commercial spaces down on the main floor. And they also have tackled all three of these as historic renovations, using historic tax credits, which makes them complicated, but usually really pretty. And then finally, what is hard to, it's hard to handle just housing without getting into some of the services that are required as well. And so last year, the home consortium actually formed a nonprofit arm to be able to handle some aging-in-place type activities in the New River Valley, two of which, this document on the left came out of an aging-in-place leadership team that was formed after the livability initiative. And so this group of folks has been working on community initiatives around aging-in-place, which basically means making our communities receptive and easy to live in throughout your entire lifespan, whether that's services, or housing, transportation, any of those types of things. And then, the New River Valley Timeman is a new initiative that is a neighbor-to-neighbor credit system, where you can provide expertise or assistance in something that you are skilled at, and then in return, use that as currency to be able to purchase a service that you are not skilled at from somebody else. So this really is for the entire age spectrum, but hopefully gives some additional social and community assistance for those aging in the community that might need help with certain things. And so that is our overview for tonight. And like I said, there's more information in your, in your reports, and I'll take any questions.
I'll start off with Supervisor Shepherd. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I don't. I just want to say thank you for your work.
Supervisor Demonts.
Hi. I'm on the Housing and Community Development Advisory Board for the town of Blacksburg. So I actually, for the Grissom Lane development, actually got to speak at the ribbon cutting. And I think it's important, just for those that are listening here tonight, to highlight one component of the home funds and all of the fundraising sources that were really important in the development of that project, and it looks like it's carrying forward through all of the projects, is not just creating an affordable housing unit, but it's also sustaining the affordability in terms of utilities and building homes to earthcraft guidelines and things of that nature. So when somebody lives there, the bulk of their income is not going to just rent and utilities. And I know on the Grissom Lane project, we were able to achieve net zero utilities for the folks that are blessed to live there, because those are truly beautiful homes. Thank you very much for the work that you do. This is essential to our community. And I know it's often confusing and quite a battle to put all the pieces together to get the funding, so thank you very much.
Supervisor King?
Don't have no questions. Just want to thank you and everybody involved. We need more affordable housing in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Supervisor Perkins?
Yes, I want to tell you I ride by the Grissom Apartments quite frequently, since I live in basically the development behind them. And I just want to say, you all did a magnificent job with that. And I know that it is, it is such a wonderful place for people to live. And so I thank you very much for that. And I thank you for all you do, but I particularly can look at that and say what a marvelous thing it is. So thank you very much for all that.
Supervisor Creed?
Yeah, just one thing. I would like to see, you know, a little more of everybody within Montgomery County. I know my district, we don't have such a thing, is what you're talking about here. And that seems to be awfully foolish of us to think that we can get by without using some things for these other people that live anywhere within the county. But some of these places that have never had anything like that at all, would certainly appreciate it in a, in a great big bunch. So that's, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did that spunk? Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation this evening, and stepping in for Elizabeth.
Yes.
Thanks, Jen.
Next is a NRB RC broadband survey coordination. And Mr. Byrd, you're on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight and share with you some survey results for our broadband survey. Get it on full screen here. As a matter of background first, the Commission's been working with the town of Blacksburg and Virginia Tech, the Blacksburg Partnership, for a couple of years on increasing speeds within their community for business purposes and residential purposes. And as the project evolved, they approached a time where it made sense to survey the users within the town. And they thought it would be beneficial to work with the county, from the town of Christiansburg as well, and Blacksburg Partnership, and the Montgomery County Chamber, reaching as many people as possible, find out what the user experience for internet access in the communities is all about. So we launched the survey for the idea of understanding what the users' experiences are, and share that with the product providers across the county. So we launched the survey in the latter part of October, and the data you're going to see tonight, it goes through December 30. The survey remains open, and we can, we can take that data continuously. It's timestamped when it comes in, so we'll know when it, when it comes in. In terms of who took the survey, we had 755 people in Blacksburg, 852 in Christiansburg, and just over 200 in the county. So about 1,800 total took this survey. So who took this, within the county specifically? Full-time residents, 94 percent, which we'll see here, it's a little bit under 200, and students, about 5 percent. So here's a table that breaks out that pie chart, so you can see just under 180 full-time residents took this, and a smaller number of students and others. We asked everyone within the three respondent groups between the two towns in the county, how important is internet access? Probably, I'm not surprised to find that 99 percent in Blacksburg, 98 percent in Christiansburg, 97 percent in Montgomery County said it's important. A large portion of them have children under 18 in the household, they're using this for educational purposes, and a large portion are using this for job training at home as well. We asked people how they're, what's their use of the internet. You see the top 10 here on current uses for Montgomery County, with email, shopping, news, and banking in the top four. We also asked the survey respondents, where do they see their internet needs going in the future? What's the emerging trends? Number one is telephone medicine, followed by VPN connections. That's virtual private network. That's how people connect to their office networks at home. And then behind that is voice-over internet, over-the-telephone internet service. All three of those are very high bandwidth activities on the internet infrastructure. So this is a table that outlines Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and the county side by side. All three areas had the same top four respondents in terms of email, shopping, news, and banking. The top 10 flip-flops a little bit, but the top 10 is consistent among all citizens within the county. We also asked, how many devices in that house are connected to the internet at a given time? Those could be your cell phones, could be your tablet, your desktop, could be items that are connected to the internet within the house, like thermostats, garage door openers, those sort of things. The largest respondent group, over a third, were six to nine devices at one time. Followed behind that are one to five, but not far behind is 10 to 15. So it's not going to be long before we see that 10 to 15 surpass the one to five, and possibly even get to the top. We also asked how much people are paying. It's a pretty broad range, between $30 and $100. The largest segment in the county was that 26 percent are paying between $50 and $70 for internet access. And we got some information last week that one of the providers went up, so we understand that this is probably up to $55 to $75 range now. We asked how people are accessing the internet, and it's very different between the three communities, which makes the issue of increasing bandwidth somewhat challenging. Town of Blacksburg, majority of people are accessing internet through a cable modem, with their primary provider being Comcast. And then their second provider being DSL through Verizon. And then 12 percent have a wireless option. Christiansburg, first is a cable modem, but they're flip-flopping their second choice is wireless in Christiansburg, followed by DSL. And then Montgomery County, primarily, people are accessing internet through DSL. And that's copper telephone lines. And then you see your providers at the bottom. In Christiansburg, Cintel is the largest provider in terms of respondents, and the county, Verizon reflects the DSL. We asked respondents about their satisfaction or dissatisfaction with their current provider experience. In Montgomery County, there were four factors that we asked them about: speed, reliability, customer service, and customer support. And all four of those factors, the majority of customers in Montgomery County were somewhat very unsatisfied. And you see on the right-hand side here, the reasons why. Connection speed was overwhelmingly the number one piece, and that goes back to the DSL item there. In terms of how this compares to Blacksburg and Christiansburg, in Blacksburg, the respondents were somewhat satisfied, to very satisfied, with speed and reliability, but they were not satisfied with customer support and customer service. In Christiansburg, that flipped, whereas they were happy with customer service and support, but they were not, they were not happy with customers, I'm sorry, with speed and reliability. So speed reliability is good in Blacksburg, and customer service support is good in Christiansburg. Then all four factors weighed low in the county. Here's a graphic that depicts speed test results. So as the respondents went on, they could click a speed test with their computer, find out how fast they were accessing the internet. In Montgomery County, the, to the upper left, was the largest respondent group at 1.5 to 3 megs, and that reflects the DSL connection speed. As you move down further right into the red, those are slower speeds than DSL typically. If you load up the Blacksburg image of this, you see the largest segment in the upper left, they're accessing it at greater than 25 megs. And then in Christiansburg, their largest segment was in 10 to 25. So that's the difference between cable modem and DSL, which you're seeing there. And then some of the wireless providers have some higher speed options, too. So we asked them if they were not going faster than 3 megs, why not? These are the top respondents in the county. They had 65 people respond, and they were saying, "It's not reliable or secure." Primarily, it's not available in some of those areas, and then lack of service to set that, that system up for the residents. There was a business tract for the survey as well, and we heard from 43 businesses in the county. 27 of them said they had home-based businesses. In Blacksburg and Christiansburg, we had a very high business response rate, and a lot of them had home-based businesses. That's a pretty big trend that we're seeing an increase here. For the business tract, we asked if they're using a virtual private network, which is a high bandwidth activity. And over a third said that they were using that option. We also asked about some skilled employees. Are you able to find what you need in terms of computer software internet skills? Not difficult was the majority in Blacksburg and Christiansburg, but in the county, it was somewhat difficult. Same thing about employees, but with training. How was it to find training for them? Not difficult, and somewhat difficult, so mixed results there, and might be some training opportunities. So we asked, what did the respondents think the role was for government in dealing with this challenge? This was an open-ended survey response, and we had 815 responses that we needed to code. So our staff took these and put them in different buckets and coded them. This is just the Montgomery County section broken out on the screen, but it reflects what we saw between the other two communities as well, so I'll give you those, those figures. Of 815 responsive, responses, we had 80 percent that said that the government role was to encourage more competition and consumer choice for broadband. We had 12 percent that said that government should be in the role of being a service provider in unserved areas, and then about 8 percent said they do not know. So Kristy Straden, our staff, was lead on this survey effort and a lot of our broadband work, and she's done a lot of research on some of the best practices. And this is some of what we've seen across the country that helps crack this nut. Working with providers to figure out the exact areas where you need higher bandwidth, helping to point them in the correct location. Making all this information, data you're collecting, make it readily available, posting on websites, it's helpful when they're doing their research. If you have a provider that's interested in your community, see what you can do about permitting, plan review, decrease their time, so it decreases their overhead. Make ready policies is something you'll hear a lot about. So if the county has a capital improvement project that you're about to do, notify other utility providers, and let them know you're going to have a trench open in six months or a year from now. They may want to prioritize investment. Right-of-way management. We hear time and again that the right-of-ways are full, so evaluate which ones have capacity available. And something that the Regional Commission is challenging all governments in this group to think about, is evaluating conduit program, where you may look to put conduit in the ground with a micro duct, so multiple providers can pull through. And a lot of times, you hear from providers, getting underground is their highest expense, but if the conduits are related and part of the project, then might be able to recover the whole government cost for putting that in the ground through a lease to a provider. So what's the county's role? If you have fiber assets, if you have capacity available, consider renting that space or leasing it to a provider. Blacksburg, right now, has a demonstration project in the downtown area that they've worked on, some extra fiber capacity they have. If you're hearing from the community that there's need, capture that and communicate that to the providers. We have the survey still open, and we can collect that data that way. What's the air service provider's role? Really is to provide you all and their needs. We need to have open lines of communication with providers, know what it is their challenge was, so you all can address those needs, and then ultimately provide the service to consumers. So we started sharing these results last week with the town of Blacksburg, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Blackstone Partnership earlier today, you all this evening, and then tomorrow, again, we're sharing this with the town of Christiansburg Council. And then after those meetings, we're going to pull our group back together again of these partners to talk about hosting a private, a provider's meeting, where we share those data with them, and ask them what they can do to address some of these needs that we've identified within the communities. So here's our survey link. It's on Survey Monkey we're hosting, and we can share this with the county if you will push out and continue to share that to collect more data. With that, I'll be happy to take any comments or questions that you have on the survey findings.
Supervisor Creed?
No.
Supervisor Perkins?
Do we have this presentation that you've given to us?
Yes.
Okay, on our?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Supervisor King?
No questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Demonts?
I don't have any questions for you, but can you go back a slide? I was copying down that address. Thank you.
Do we, and I'm not sure, Kristy, do you know, is that on our website? Didn't we put that? I thought, did, do you recall? I don't know if Jennifer's looked at. I think at some point, we had a link on our county homepage for that. Now, I don't know if it's, I'll try to look in the next 30 seconds. I don't know if it's still there or not, but I know at one point, we had put that out for folks to find as well.
I couldn't find it, just all in one spot, so.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you very much.
Kevin, thank you very much. I appreciate the efforts and I appreciate the tips on how we as government can help our citizens get better services. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I discuss?
Sure, absolutely.
Kevin, how long have you at the, what's now the New River Valley?
Your regional commission?
Yes, copy regional commission. How long have you all been working on this?
Broadband planning started in New River Valley over 15 years ago.
That's what I thought.
And we have a lot of match and corridors identified. There has been fiber builds. We have a middle mile open access network that goes from Withville to Bottotack County that's 200 miles and does a ring around Blacksburg and comes back out, and it also comes through Christiansburg. So we have a lot of assets to work with in the region, and it's connecting those providers with those assets.
Right. I knew you'd been working on it a long time, all the time that I've been on the commission, it's been that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
The next on our agenda is public hearings. The first of the public hearings is an ordinance regarding the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Development Area Consortium Agreement. This is an ordinance authorizing the exercise of joint powers under an agreement between the counties of Bland, Carroll, Floyd, Giles, Grayson, Montgomery County, Pulaski, Smith, Washington County, With, and the cities of Bristol, Galax, and Radford, Virginia. The purpose, do I need to read the purpose? Okay. Now, I don't believe anyone has signed up, but that doesn't mean that you can't address this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to address this topic? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. The next public hearing, and I want to share with my fellow supervisors, as y'all know, I'm the supervisor as far as the liaison with the planning commission. The item regarding the Virginia Tech Foundation came before the planning commission. After hearing public comments and taking some questions from the planning commission, the planning commission members did not feel that they were ready to go forward. They did not feel that their answers had been, or they received sufficient answers at this point, at that point in time. They did seek my advice as to whether I thought the board would go on without them. I told them that I did not believe that our board would do that, that we wanted to hear from the planning commission, that it was important for us to hear their and get their input. We have a lot of great people on our planning commission. I did say that we wouldn't want to see any unnecessary delays like six months or something along those lines, because this board has typically moved fairly quickly on items. But there were several public speakers and as well as the applicant. Now, this evening, this has been withdrawn, but we're still going to take public comment, but there won't be a presentation by the applicant nor will staff make any comments, is my understanding. So I'll go ahead and open up this public hearing again. This matter has been withdrawn and has been continued to March 27, 2017, but I imagine there is, and there's at least one person who's signed up this evening, and we want to give those folks an opportunity in case they are not available on the 27th. And the first person we have is Lisa Emmett.
Chris?
Chair.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure everyone's clear, they have withdrawn the application, they've just, we?
Postponed it.
Right. Staff recommends, and I think planning commission also asks that we postpone making a decision and hold the public hearing. And so the public hearing will be opened and then continued to March 27.
27th.
Correct.
And I'm sorry if I misspoke. It is just for the purposes of this.
It's going away. It's not going away.
Wait. It's just been postponed until the planning commission can have the opportunity to work through this and see if the applicant can satisfy some of the questions that they had in regards to looking for the criteria, pulling it out of the AFD.
Right. And just to be clear, the way AFD legislation is set up is that the committee and planning commission's role is to provide recommendations to this board before you act, and so it makes sense to wait to get that recommendation before you would act, or even hold a public hearing and hear what the citizens have to say. So that was our purpose of continuing the public hearing until that.
And that was my thoughts when the head of the planning asked me what I thought our board would do. I felt like we would want their input. Again, for the purposes of this evening, this matter has been withdrawn until the meeting on March 27, 2017, and the first person up is Lisa Emmett.
Well, I may need to wait and speak on the 27th.
Ma'am, you have a right to speak now, and you can speak.
And I can speak them, too?
Yes, ma'am. And you will need to state your name and address, and you will have five minutes to address the board.
I'm Lisa Emmett, and I live at 2751 Allen Road in the county. It's Christiansburg City. And I don't know, I want to ask whether everyone on the board has the, I mean, have they seen the application?
Ma'am, this is really our turn to listen to you.
I know that, but.
But we don't normally respond to questions.
Well, I just, if you haven't seen it, then what I have to say doesn't make any sense. But if you have seen it, my, our main objection, or my main objection with giving an early, earlier than would normally be removal from agricultural and forestal district designation for this property, which would normally expire anyway in 2021, I just, I am opposed to stepping up that removal. I feel like there is more time that is needed to analyze all of the impact that may, that may affect this land and Wilson Creek and the neighborhood and the valley, and I feel like the, in the Virginia Tech Foundation's application, in their justification for requirement number five, the proposed new land use was not anticipated by the landowner at the time he or she placed their property in the district. Anyway, when they justify or give their justification for the criterion number five, they mentioned that they have a commitment from VDOT of providing funding for the intended smart road extension, but that that funding is only available in the current fiscal year. And my, I feel very strongly that whether or not they have funding, how much funding they have, when it's available to them or not, should not be a consideration in whether they are allowed early removal from the agricultural and forestal district designation, that their funding source has nothing to do with that, and it should not be a matter for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all the individuals who signed up to speak on that, but that doesn't mean that you can't come forward and speak on this issue. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward this evening to address the board? Seeing no one else coming forward?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I think that's the question, but you just told me to put an ask portion.
And ma'am, this is really our turn to listen to you. You have to listen to us a lot of the times, but this is our turn to listen to you.
But part of what I wanted to say has to do with the funding.
Oh, ma'am, would you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry. Nelby Akers, 2392 Allen Road.
Thank you very much, ma'am. You have five minutes.
But one of the concerns I had is with the money that the highway department has promised to this board, whatever it is. I wondered if that was in part of the six-year planning, if they get that every year, or if they lose it this year, they'll never get anything back, and I guess I don't get an answer for that tonight, so. But most of the things that we had to say about this, we did cover at the meeting the other night, which of course, like citizens, not because of what y'all have got to do. So if we need to talk, what about the meeting on the 8th? Is that you or is that the planning commission?
That would be the planning commission.
And then you will meet on the 27th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that is it. But we kind of found it puzzling that the VDOT had given, it was told like a million dollars, but they had to spend it this year. And if it wasn't on the six-year planning, then we didn't know how they got the million dollars.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other individuals who would like to come forward at this time? Seeing no one else coming forward, I will go ahead and close this public hearing. I don't, is there any action that we need to take after the public hearings?
Well, actually, if you instead of closing the public hearing, could you continue it to the March 27th?
Is there a motion to continue this public hearing until March 27?
You don't need a motion.
What's that?
You don't need a motion.
I don't need a motion?
No, you can continue it, but just don't close it.
Okay, all right. We won't close it, we'll just continue it. Thank you for providing my legal advice on local government issues, Marty, and there's a reason I don't practice in that area. So we're going to just simply continue it on over. Is there any action in regards to the first matter that anyone, in regards to the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Development Area Consortium Agreement?
No, not tonight. That was a public hearing that's required because of the structure of the organization. We'll have the ordinance for you for your approval at an upcoming meeting.
And Mary is our representative, so she would be able to talk about it also.
All right. Is there a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the board?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kurtie?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six eyes.
First on our work session is the former Prices Fork Elementary School Revitalization Project.
And I believe Emily and Jennifer are going to cover that for us tonight. Is the boards aware the former Prices Fork Elementary School was sold some time ago to Taylor Hollow Construction, who is working to redevelop that property for a mix of housing, a farm-to-table restaurant, and some other uses. That project is moving along very well. It has attracted funding from the Department of Housing and Community Development, also funding from the Appalachian Regional Commission, and while those are very good things, they also tend to slow the process down sometimes. We sat in a, how long was that meeting? Hour and a half? Two-hour meeting, going through all the requirements for the paperwork to keep this moving. Joe Fortier and Taylor Hollow are very patient folks in order to work through all this, but Emily and Jennifer tonight are going to give you an update on how that project's coming and some of the next steps that we need to be aware of, so. Whoop, you're still running. Thanks. I saw Emily pointing at the timer.
It's okay, you can give me the timer.
I won't. I won't.
Good evening. Craig didn't mention, but I serve as the county representative on the leadership team that Jennifer's going to talk about a little bit. That group meets at least once a month and has kept the energy going up as we have had to wade through quite a bit of paperwork and bureaucracy on many facets of this project. We've shared a few updates with you in the past, but this is going to be the first one that we've shared since the announcement late this summer on the BCI grant, and that's the Vibrant Communities Initiative Grant from the state. We received $2.5 million as well as one other locality in the state, and this is a pilot grant. This is the first time we've done it. So we're blazing trails, but that means that there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to try to figure out which paperwork goes where and who signs what. So it's been a little bit of a learning curve, but hopefully we'll make it a little easier for people that come after us. I was going to introduce Jennifer, we'll see, but you guys got to hear her introduction earlier, and one of the other hats that she wears is, she is sort of our main point of contact on all things related to the grants. Obviously, her work through the home, with the home consortium gives her a bit of an edge on this, so she's used to a lot of those i's that have to be dotted and t's that have to be crossed, and she keeps us straight because it's just not, not part of our everyday life.
And she carries around a notebook that's about that fit.
It's just this one project, the first notebook is about this. It's not full yet, but it is, that's how large the reins are. So the county did receive the grant, and in the future, at upcoming meetings, we're going to be bringing different kinds of paperwork, and Jennifer's going to talk to you about that, what the contract would look like, the developer agreement, there's a lien document, so she's going to walk you through those. And even though the county is the recipient of the grant, we will be contracting with the regional commission to administer it on our behalf. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Great presentation. Hello again, and thank you for having me. So like Emily mentioned, I am going to give just an overview of where we stand.
Yeah, I don't see the notebook. Why didn't you bring the notebook?
Time is of the essence. I'll bring that in halfway through the project and see it growing. So just, I'm going to give a brief overview of the project. Craig, you mentioned a few of the things that are going into it, but I'll expound a little bit more. An update of where we currently stand now, and then some next steps that we want you to sort of be ready for as we keep moving forward with this. So first, just to refresh your memory, this is the school, and I'm going to walk you through just the main components of the project, so we know what we're talking about. This highlighted section here is actually phase one, and so it's not officially a part of the $2.5 million that we're talking about, but these are the former classrooms, and this is what is currently under construction, if you drive by and see work happening. And the tie-in here is that this is all housing, and so in part funded with local home funds, which I just gave you a brief overview a second ago. These classrooms are being converted into apartments, two-bedroom apartments for persons 55 and older. Half will be limited to those with a certain income cap, and then the rest are market rates and age restriction on everything. So those are under construction now, and they are, they're really cool, I'm going to show you. So here is, before construction began, one of the classrooms, typical to an old school. And then here is in progress, some of the framing that you see going on. Now, a lot of the built-in features have been removed to keep them safe, but because this is a historic renovation, a lot of those are going back. So even to the point where a lot of these folks will have a big chalkboard in their living room, because that is historic to the space, and so that has to be retained. And so this, this next part is all about the current funding that we're talking about. So there are two spaces, two large spaces being renovated under the Vibrant Communities Initiative Grant, all to create the Prices Fork Food Center. So this first shaded section is the current kindergarten room, and it looks, or it used to, look like this. So large, open space, we call it the mushroom because of that circular space. And then the second space is the former cafeteria and gymnasium, which looks like this. And so both of these spaces are going to become some of the components that Craig mentioned earlier, commercial incubator kitchen to serve expanding or start up food-based businesses, so they would get to come in and use the space, saving the money that it would take for them to certify their kitchen, to be able to then legally sell jam or jelly or anything that requires certification. A local craft brew pub and a farm-to-table restaurant, in addition to a few other spaces that are reserved for future food-based businesses. We are going to be hosting a business competition similar to the Shark Tank models that Floyd has done, Pulaski has done, but centered around local food-based businesses, and the winners of that competition, which is part of the grant funding as well, have the opportunity to have space on the site. So lots of things going on as part of that project. So since the award was made last year, the leadership team, which is about 12 members, so we were a bus leadership team, like Emily mentioned, we've met at least monthly since that time to continue our planning work and to prepare all for this contract execution with the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is the state agency that is funding this project. And so earlier this month, we were finally successful and able to sit down with DHCD to go over all of the elements needed and required by them to get under contract. And thankfully, because with time, we just kept getting things done, a majority of those items were already completed, and we were just able to say, here we go, we've worked through a lot of these things. So that brings us to sort of the next steps. And with that contract negotiation meeting, a clock started ticking, and we had 90 days to finish the rest of those items. And so there are three main documents currently being drafted now that you And so there are three main documents currently being drafted now, that you all will see at a future meeting. But I'm gonna try to walk you through the reason for them and why we have them, so that when you see them in the future, you will connect the dots and remember all that. So the three things are the contract with DHCD itself. This is the main grant contract. And then the other two are legal documents with the developer table, which is a developer agreement and a lien document. And I'm just gonna unpack each of those briefly, and then we'll take questions. So the contract itself is a document between DHCD and the county as the grant recipient. And the majority of the contents of that document were what we talked about at that contract negotiation meeting. And so it is the initial document that secures those funds and lays out the strings that are attached. So it identifies the work that we're supposed to be doing, in what space, with what deliverables. And in this case, deliverables are jobs created. And it also establishes a grant timeline, so they don't give you forever to do this. It's usually 24 to 36 months to get the work done and start providing services. The next document is the developer's agreement. So this document, saying with our local home funds, is very common, but for DHCD, it is less common, because they are used to the grant recipient also being the owner of the property, and this case is a little bit different. And so they require a developer agreement, and the county is one of them as well, so that it can lay out, it can basically pass some of those grant requirements listed in the contract on to the developer. Since they are the ones that own the property, will be doing the construction. And so it lays out in detail the scope of work, how the funds are to be used, standards and conditions, which is both for construction and for who needs to benefit from this work. And then, like I mentioned earlier, it transfers some of those obligations, so that the county has a legal way to, to pass their requirements on to the developer as well. And then finally, the lien document is the recorded document against the property, and it applies many of the same conditions laid out in the previous two, but that recordation is really what gives it weight against the property. So it provides security for a long-term investor, which is what the state wants. It doesn't want the county to use the funds and then turn around and use the building for something completely different that doesn't have a community benefit. And then, again, it identifies the conditions of compliance, which in this case is, for every x amount of dollars that they're giving us, we are then turning around and creating a job opportunity, and in our case, around local foods. An entrepreneur served in that way to either start or expand their business. So that, with that, I will take any questions you may have when we resume.
I'll start with Supervisor Shepherd, this is in his district.
So you said that this process, the clock started ticking, you had 90 days. So is just what we've just seen, all that needs to happen in that 90 days to get that to happen? And if, for some odd reason, I can't see why, that didn't happen, like you went over the 90 days, what is there, you just lose it?
Okay, so the first question is, almost everything that you see here is part of that 90-day clock, except for the developer agreement. The developer agreement, fully executing that would be a condition of our contract, so we could execute the full contract. But before we could start drawing their money down, they want the county to have that developer agreement locked down. And we made it a condition, because the contract itself is the hard and fast parameters of the grant, and so having that before finally executing the developer agreement, just make sure that we cover all of our bases in the developer agreement. That's how I understand it. We don't want to go past that 90 days, and I don't, I don't foresee that happening. It would require a written sort of approval and dialogue with DHCD as to why we would need that. So it's not a hard and fast deal breaker, but without a special circumstance, they really want you to stay.
If I, and Jennifer, if I can just add to, to those comments, when we had the meeting with, with the group a couple of weeks ago, we were fairly well along on a lot of things already. That was one of the things I took as a takeaway from that meeting, thanks to the, the leadership team group that's together on this. We've already addressed a lot of things that they came in and said, well, you've gotta do this, and you've gotta, we've already got that taken care of. So I'm not, I'm not concerned at this point about the 90 days, but we're gonna keep moving forward as rapidly as we can.
I asked the question just because I know there's ears out there listening and wanting to know those questions, so it wasn't necessarily for me, but thank you.
Supervisor Demox?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Supervisor King?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Perkins?
None, right now, thank you.
Supervisor Creed? Thank you very much, Ms. Elsie, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Jennifer is an employee of the regional commission, but we've told Kevin she can't do anything else but this project till she gets it.
Oh, that was item one in the work session, and let's see, where are we at?
Rural additions.
Rural addition process. Good evening, Emily?
I have a few transportation items to go over with you tonight, and part of this, they'll both be brief, but part of it is just because we're trying to work as staff towards looking at transportation throughout the county in a more comprehensive way. We tend to have our six-year hearing, our, you know, rural additions as they come in, we didn't really have a process, and that's one of the things we're gonna talk about. And then smart scale, well, it's on, you know, we've already been scored, those results will come out, it'll be another two years before we talk about it again. And so we're trying to get to the place where your staff is able to keep you guys updated comprehensively on all things related to transportation. So this section here on rural additions is fairly straightforward. But I wanted to first make sure that you understood what rural additions are. I know from speaking with several of you outside of the meeting, that you do get calls from your constituents who have questions about rural additions. And this is a method for having roads accepted into the state system for maintenance. It's a very specific process, because VDOT obviously wants state road funding to go to state roads. So these have to be older roads, these are not the roads we're creating when we do subdivisions currently, or recently, using the subdivision ordinance. And they have to meet very specific criteria in order to qualify. It's an optional program, but it's important to note that the board has made the choice that we are opted in to this program. As I mentioned, those restrictions a little bit earlier, 5% of our secondary construction funds can go into this program. That's approximately, it's like $12,400 for FY 2017, and it's projected to stay around there. We have about 11 projects on the list right now, and the average project is just over $300,000. So we, using our current list, we basically will probably be moving forward on the one at the top right now, which is Cornbread Road off of Baines Chapel. And however, once we do that, we will then, as you can see, take some time to build back up in order to do the next on the list.
Super supervisor Demox chastised me for laughing at you. I'm not laughing at you, I'm just amazed that $12,000 a year just doesn't get you a whole lot.
It's not a lot of road projects that we can do with those. And so because of the limitations, you guys haven't probably seen one in a while, and after we do this upcoming one that I'm currently working with VDOT on, we may not do one again in any of our time here. It takes, takes a bit to gather those up. And one of the things that we might be bringing back to at a future date is talking about prioritizing these. Much like the state has said, what's the greatest need, and what can we do to help need versus who's been on the list longer, the board may want to, as part of your road viewers or something in the future, look at some different prioritization. But right now, we have them sort of in the order in which they've been received, and that's how the county's historically done that.
Right there, you got $300,000, is that what's in there now? And you gonna use that on cornbread?
Right now, we have just under $300,000. That does not include our FY 17, $12,464. And then we will be able to use FY $18,000 moving forward. You can't stretch it out too far, but we can go into the next. So Chris, when Chris Price with VDOT did that estimate, Kevin was still working for the county, they went out together and prepared that estimate, so he, I believe those are 2008 estimates, so he's gonna make sure that we have the fund available to actually do cornbread with today's financing and today's estimate. Things have changed related to stormwater and the technologies that they use, so, but yes, that's approximately, cornbread will be somewhere around $350,000.
Took a long time to save that for $12,000 a year.
Not a quick process. And then what was provided to you as part of your tab this evening are the forms that we have just recently started using, and that's one of the main reasons I wanted to bring it forward. Those criteria that we talked about earlier, we, these forms are a method for us to be able to, to make sure that those criteria are met. It also gives us the opportunity to work with the property owners who are making the request, to make sure that they understand the different factors. One of which is that it's not a quick process. You know, you can get on the list by filling these out and the board making a resolution, however, it's not gonna happen quickly unless funding structure change. So, you know, I think we stayed the course with keeping adding them to the list, but they should have an expectation that it's not a fast process. Additionally, the cost of moving utilities out of the right-of-way that needs to be dedicated, that is borne by the property owners. A plat that would be prepared to publicly dedicate that right-of-way, that is also borne by the property owners. In years past, the county has paid for the deeds that actually get recorded, we can cross that, that bridge when we get there. That's a very small cost, once the utilities and everything are moved. And again, it gives us the chance to look at length of time with them. So we can get a complete listing of who lives there, and that they have a full understanding of what they're asking for as being part of rural additions program. And so that's all I have for you this evening, I just wanted to give you an update that staff has started requiring these forms, and should we get a completed one, we'll be bringing it back to you for resolution.
Is there any questions on the board? I'll just ask that generally.
I have a general question, just for clarification. So for the, the work on Cornbread Road, what, for $300,000, what, what does that create? What does it do? Yeah, well, I'm, just, I don't have any rural roads in my district. It'd be, I don't think we would ever have a rural addition coming from G. But just so I can understand, if it comes before us, what happens?
So roads that qualify for rural additions meet those initial standards that we were talking about. And basically, at this time, whenever they were platted or created, some of them are even platted, they're just, you know, prescriptive in nature, they, they met no standards whatsoever. So what will happen with the funds is that they'll make sure they have adequate drainage, they'll make sure that the, the all-weather coating, whatever it might be, it might be sort of a gravel place, it might be asphalt, that it all is able to be taken into the system to be maintained by VDOT. So whatever is needed, whether it's, sometimes there are some curves that are straightened out, if it's, if they're like S-curves in nature, it can be a variety of things, but basically, there are minimum standards that have to be met, including that unencumbered right-of-way, proper drainage, things like that. And then it's, it's eligible to be taken in for maintenance, and it'll no longer have to be privately maintained, the state will take it over.
So right now, for the, the residents on the next one on the list on Cornbread, they're privately, like if we have a 10-inch snow event, they're privately plowing their road to get...
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Any others?
Just one more. So if I, if somebody talks to me about doing this, and they fill this out, that's not gonna happen in my lifetime, is it?
I had to go live a long time, what are you talking about?
I mean, that's what she said.
Based on the current funding structure, it does take some time in order for it to happen, that's correct.
I'm gonna live a long time just to aggravate you.
But you lived a very, very long time, so I, I would never wanna put it out to a citizen as it won't happen in our lifetime, because at some point, you could have a group of citizens who gets to this level of understanding and finds out the cost, and is willing to bear that cost themselves, and they can bring their own road up to standard, and we can bring it into the system. So there, there are some multiple streams, but more than likely, what happens is, these are private roads, that the county is currently limiting development on private roads, we don't allow it the way that we used to, and that's because of this, not a lot of property road maintenance agreements in place, snow removal, hot holes, all sorts of issues related to safety. But this isn't a quick process, so.
Thank you.
Not a savior, exactly.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and next is watch for children's signs.
So the watch for children's signs, and I briefed you guys on this earlier this summer, and basically, just to let you know that we have a policy, was adopted in 2000, and then was updated in 2013, and this is the slide that I provided last time, this gives you a sense of how we currently go through the process. However, since that policy was adopted, there are some changes that are required by the board if we wanna continue our watch for children program. So if we did a new policy, identify that we should probably keep, still retain the standards that we have, and those are some certain thresholds, not every road is gonna be suitable for watch for children. They should be residential in nature, they should, you know, we don't want someone coming in asking for 60 to have a watch for children sign, it's not, not every road is gonna be a good candidate. And so we wanna keep thresholds in place. We need to cite a new section of state code, because that's what, what push does to have to update the policy, is this new section. We also need to reference a VDOT agreement instead of the resolution. So previously, the board would get the application, we would give you the recommendation, you would pass a resolution, we'd send that to VDOT, and using the previous process, VDOT would put the sign up and maintain it. Now, we will enter into an agreement, but we are, we have the burden of the cost for the signs, the installation of the signs, and the maintenance of the signs through that agreement. Existing signs will be maintained by VDOT. And so that leads us to the considerations. The costs of the signs are approximately $1,000 each. If the board wanted to continue doing the watch for children's sign policy, and we just did the update, we would need to identify whether the county or the citizens making the request would be purchasing the signs. We also will have to have, it's done through General Services currently, those signs installed and maintained, so should they be knocked down, stolen, things like that, they have to be, to be maintained. The land use permit, we mentioned that, that is the agreement that the board would ultimately authorize Craig to enter into on our behalf. It's a minimal fee of approximately $100, we could qualify for waiver, and we actually could have all of our watch for childrens covered under one agreement. We would do one, and then we would add an appendix as those were added in. Another thing that I did touch on when I was here before is both the IT, the Institute Transportation Engineers, and this other acronym, several people who are very knowledgeable about transportation indicate that these signs are not effective. They indicate for a variety of reasons, whether it's visual clutter, people not paying attention. Another item that's identified is potentially a false sense of security, so people letting children play in the street, which is obviously not, not the intent. And I have a couple of those items here, because the grower I detected asked for some additional information, but both of which cite multiple, multiple sources of saying that they don't feel that it's effective. And in speaking with our, our local VDOT office, they are certainly willing, and we've done this on previous petitions in the past, they're certainly willing to work with us. If we get a call from the citizen who says they have concerns about people speeding, we can look at a speed study, we can work with the sheriff's office, we have different things that we can do to make sure that if there is a safety issue, if there's something that can be done, we can work on other than just posting the sign. So these are some things to, to consider, because our... So, these are some things to, to consider because our, our next steps are either to update the policy, including the new language and taking on those liabilities or responsibilities that, that identified. Or to look at eliminating the policy, but, but still have a process by which staff works with citizens for these concerns. And obviously, we consult with VDOT on all of these. There was one in Mr. Shepherd's district when I first started, and they wanted a watch for children sign. They did not qualify, but in working with VDOT, we were able to find a different type of signage, which I think stood out a little bit more. And also, VDOT was able to purchase and install themselves. So, that was very helpful. So, I wouldn't want you to think that by getting rid of the policy that we were anyway trying to make a situation unsafe. We're just trying to advise you that if we're going to continue to do them, there are some costs. And that's all I have.
I got which side I started on the last time, but I'll go start Supervisor Creed, Supervisor Perkins, Supervisor King.
Well, we talked about this earlier, we was also talking about county staff. Steve didn't have enough people to keep up with all the signs, right?
It is, it is a concern if we have responsibility for signage. We don't have staff to do that. And so, anytime we can allow VDOT to take that responsibility, we'd like to recommend that we do that.
Yeah, they can do that. All right. Thank you very much.
Supervisor DeMott.
So, if we install the signs, and the cost to install currently would be approximately $1,000, and that would be paid for by the county. And then, the sign is, say somebody comes along and vandalizes it and spray paints it and bends it up and stuff, and it has to be replaced. So, then, we would pay another $1,000 to rehang a sign.
And that's per sign? And that's just the cost of the materials? So...
Are they made of gold?
They are, they are just green in color now. And that is the way in which you differentiate old ones versus new ones. Because VDOT won't maintain these bright green ones, only the previous yellow ones. Didn't learn that.
So, the previous yellow ones are VDOT maintained, but if we move forward and continue to have a watch for children program, then we are going to shoulder the burden of cost to install and cost to maintain and replace if vandalized.
Yes.
Yes.
And what's the life of one of these signs? I guess, let me ask that in a different way. So, if somebody, say, has a few school-aged children at home and they request a watch for children sign, is it then permanent if the need for the sign grows up and moves away, say?
It would be on us to go back, revisit, evaluate whether the sign is still needed or not. It would be our responsibility as a county.
And so, what, what we need to do then as a board is make a decision on whether we want to continue having a watch for children sign policy or pursue other avenues through VDOT?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have anything.
Well, you know, we could go out and buy some of the old yellow signs and just put them up periodically. But that being said, it just reminds me of why we need people like Ms. Spicks to be going up to Washington and going to Richmond periodically to make sure that the state doesn't hand down things that we end up having to pay for here on a local level that had been paid for in the state. And I greatly appreciate Emily's presentation and also about the studies. They're saying that the children's signs don't necessarily aren't effective the way we would hope they would be. Yes.
One of the handouts also has some information about tort liability. I thought Marty would appreciate that.
But if you live, if you live within the corporate lembreance of one of the towns, then the towns are responsible for this. And the county has no...
No responsibility in the towns.
No responsibility whatsoever. But this is not only, if we ask the, the patrons on the street to pay $1,000, that's even, this is what happens. It comes from the federal government to us and we do pretty well. And then, all of a sudden, we have to pass it on to the individual citizens. And yet, on my street, I know that the town had a little sign up. And when the children all grew up, they took it down. And now, we have a whole new group on our street and they will put it back up.
In the, in the town of Blacksburg, the way that they're processed is they will construct the sign for you so you can request it. And at your cost, they will, their utilities, public works folks will make it, but you have to come and pick it up and install it. It has to be located on private property. They do not allow it in their right of way.
Right. And people on the private property don't want the signs there most of the time.
And in speaking with Randy from the town, he said that his staff has noticed that the signs you actually purchase in Home Depot, Lowe's, places like that, that are completely different than a typical municipal sign that people put out and have a little flag. And he said that his staff is seeing that those are way more effective than these types of signs.
There are several of those throughout my neighborhood. So, when I drive through, there's these little orange guys with the red flag.
Guys with the green sign or the red sign. Well, the ones that I was talking about before were probably 30 years ago. So, the, the rules have changed since then.
Thank you, Emily. I appreciate that. Is there a motion to come out of...
I have a question before we go out of work session. When do we need to make a decision about this?
I was going to ask the board to try to give staff direction when we came out. But that, that was my thoughts on it so staff would know where we need to go.
Yeah.
And we can talk about it while we're in work session if, if, is there a general feeling on which direction we need to go?
I mean, it, it all comes back on money, but if VDOT is willing to work with us, I don't see why we would have to keep a policy.
We have a current petition that came in that was with our previous policy, which is how we noticed the deficiency in working with Paul Brown. He said that, that the process wouldn't work. But he did say, and Paul Brown works for, for VDOT, he did say that he'd be willing to go out on site with us and look at what some of the other options are. We called the person who submitted the petition to make sure that they knew that the board, you know, was looking at other avenues. And we've had some initial contact with them so that they know that it's, it's in process. But that, that's the only thing that makes us a little bit time sensitive is if we want to continue the policy, we need to be able to let the citizens know if we're going to have them purchase it and we'll install it or what it will be like.
I think that's a pretty heavy cost to ask a citizen to shoulder. So, the town of Blacksburg does not have a children or watch for children policy. Does Christiansburg do that?
I don't know if Christiansburg does or not. I spoke with, like I said, Randy Formica from the town of Blacksburg, and his is obviously very, they've gone to something very unique in nature. I looked at some other localities across the state of Virginia. I did notice that there is a trend that they're pretty much, most localities are doing away with them. James City County, Nelson County, lots of other localities are sort of going through what we're going through. The state code language has changed again. And this does put basically all of the burden on the locality. We have to get that agreement, which is basically a permit that the county will hold. Then, we are in charge of the purchase, installation, and perpetual maintenance. And it's, it's just not what it used to be when, when it was originally adopted these policies.
No, it wasn't. It's not.
Well, we just saw from the rural route additions, we're saving $12,000 a year. That could be one highly vandalized watch for children sign.
Is there any other comments in regards to this?
I think we need to go and talk about it and see exactly where we're at. How many we're expecting, how many you might expect to come in to, for us to put a sign out for them. You know, there's a lot of things, you know, that you need to decide whether you want to do or not. It's kind of tied together, but it's, it's all there.
How many have you done since you've been here?
Since I've been with the county, we've had two complete requests. One was the, the one out off of Longchamp McCoy that ended up not qualifying. This other request, also in your district, does qualify. So, that's about, we average about one a year. However, the recent request is in a neighborhood with multiple streets. You could have, obviously, you want one in each direction. And if you've got one in each direction on multiple streets, you're now talking, potentially that would qualify for about six times.
The one that's in my district now, that's funny because it's a dead end. Any way you go, you have to come back out the same way.
Yes, but there's some streets off to the, the side. Are you talking about Thomas Lane?
No.
Okay.
No, this is another dead end.
It is a dead end, but there's a lot more happening.
Right. Well, I will say this too. The lady that asked me about them said she'd pay for them.
Does she know? She doesn't know that?
Well, nothing says we're going to buy a $1,000 one. Can people buy a sign?
But we're going to have to meet VDOT requirements.
Yeah, we're professionally responsible for maintenance of them.
And they've got to be, they've got to be VDOT approved. I mean, now, town of Christiansburg, I believe, has their own sign shop.
They do. And there's a chance that if they have them, they allow them in their right of way. So, the towns are different from us in that respect, but they may take their right of way.
I, I come at a different perspective. I'm thinking, all right, we know, we're, we're hearing that they're not effective. And it's almost given a false sense of security. I would rather go with what Todd is talking about and try to work with VDOT to slow the speeds down, to get it to 25 miles an hour where there's a lot of kids, or 35, if it's a 45 zone, and try to get, slow people down. Because I think people pay a lot more attention to speed limit signs than the watch for children signs, especially with the materials that have been provided.
Well, and this one in my district, it didn't have a speed limit sign at all. It was like a small development. So, it actually qualified. It's already, they've already put the speed limit sign up, 25.
They, they check the speed as well. The system would, would pretty much work the way it does now where we would contact VDOT. It's just that we wouldn't go in with a predetermined, we want a watch for children sign. We would do similar to what we did on the Longchamp property where we said, there's a lot of pedestrian activity, there's not a posted speed limit sign. And so, through that, we were able to, to look at other channels. They didn't get a watch for children sign, but they, they were able to, overall, I think, make the situation safer. And that's what we would still be able to do.
And I think once you put a speed limit sign up, if deputy or state trooper see, I mean, it'd be, you know, because I don't know what kind of ticket you'll arrive to watch children. I mean, there's nothing you can charge them.
If you're going with a speed limit and they're saying they're looking out, there is, there is no ticket for that.
Yeah, they have the right of way, you know.
Yeah.
They do have the right of way. But as far as watching, there's no, no ticket for, I mean, there's ticket for hitting a pedestrian because they do have the right of way and those type of things. But there's no ticket because how do you go into court and say, they weren't observing enough to see that there were children? You can't get into their minds. And they've got to be able to prove it in court of law. It falls more into my category than local government. So, I guess I feel more comfortable talking about that. But does, I'm looking for consensus. Do we want to try to give the staff some consensus on where we were looking at them going? Do we want to take him, one meeting and then get back to them and have a chance to think on it? Where, where are we at? And, and we've got an application in, so it would be good to give staff guidance sooner rather than later.
I think consensus to do away with it.
Is there any time?
Is there? All right, in regards to doing away with it?
Doing away with the whole thing?
Doing away with the, and, and as far as the policy and then working with VDOT to get speed limit signs up, reduction of speed, and what, and, and trying to work with VDOT rather than put up the, the watch out for children signs. And I, I see four, and I'm looking to you two, but I haven't seen, all right, there's five?
Well, I'm in the town, so whatever goes on, whatever you want.
I think that has consensus that we will be doing away with it, but our policy will be, when it's brought to the staff's attention, to try to address it through VDOT like we've done with speed limit signs.
Yes. And what I'll do is I will work with Judy to update the policy and bring something back for you guys to formally be able to see how it looks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. How are we doing, everybody? Keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
All right. Is there a motion to come out of work session?
One.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair talk?
Aye.
Six eyes.
Is there any other action that we need to take out of work session? Seeing none? The next item is public address. Let's see, I don't think that we had anyone sign up, but this is an opportunity. It's different than a public hearing. You can come and address the board regarding any subject that you would like. Any citizen may come forward. You will have five minutes, and I will ask you to state your name and address. But again, this is the board's turn to listen to you. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Please come forward. If there's multiple people, if you would like to come up into the front row so I can call you one at a time, that would be great.
Good evening. My name is Bill Murray. I live 301 Givens Lane in Blacksburg. I noticed at the last meeting, schools have, are coming up short and need money. They also said that the state promised affordable $1,000 and did not come through with that. I have three suggestions for the board. First, do not raise taxes. There are too many families living in the county now who are on the financial edge. Raising taxes could push them over that edge. You recall back when they were developing affordable Givens Lane? Pinnacle Development promised affordable senior housing, and the board agreed to, or pledged $400,000 to them for that project. That project has been changing in nature. It's been called workforce, task force, student housing. It's no longer become, it's no longer affordable in senior housing. So, I would suggest, and they have pledged, since they've already kind of broken their end of it, give that to the schools where it can do some use for the county, some good. The third thing I would suggest is that there are a lot of cars parked in the county that are not registered in the county. If we could figure out what those vehicles are, it's a win-win because most of them involve tech students who have their cars registered. Outside of the county, you had a higher tax rate. Register in the county, save a little bit of money for them. We could collect revenue on that. And they, there's other benefits in the maintaining, maintenance of a vehicle down here. Insurance is cheaper. Most will probably have an admission inspection to go along with their registration that we don't have. So, I would encourage the county to look at those two aspects of raising funds besides without raising taxes. I think there are some others, but I just haven't come up with any. I would ask you to consider those options. Thank you.
Ms.? If you would please state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Sure. My name's Catherine Balandier, and I live at 1933 Sussex Road in Blacksburg. But I know you're not going to answer questions, but is this one we would address new business?
You can address any issue that you would like to address the board.
Okay. Thanks. So, I just wanted to say how strongly I support Resolution B under new business. I'm a relative newcomer to Blacksburg, but its openness to immigrants and refugees and kind of the wider community has been really overwhelming and just kind of astounding and has made me want to stay and become a permanent resident of Blacksburg. And so, hearing that the county board was considering this measure tonight just brought me out to my first local government meeting ever because I just feel really strongly that this is a really welcoming town and county, and it makes me really proud to live here. So, I just wanted to strongly encourage you to support it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other individuals who would like to come forward? Again, if there are more than one, if you'd like to come down and have a seat in the front row, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Virginia Riley. I live at 4606 Sidney Church Road in Reiner. And I just want to speak in favor of new business, item A, referring to the planning commission, the petition for the amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to regulations for, and I would rather say the abattoir. It, it has, I don't know, I think we get visions of what a slaughterhouse is, and I, I think that what is being asked for is a very nice-looking, clean, safe, attractive business. And I just was glad to hear about the Close's Fork School project. And if we're going to have farm-to-table restaurants, we need to support the... And I just was glad to hear about the Close Forks School Project. And if we're going to have farm-to-table restaurants, we need to support the farmers to get the product there. And this abattoir would be a perfect business for us. So I would just like to see it still. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone else who would like to come forward, and again, if there's multiple speakers and you would like to address the board, I would ask that you come and have a seat on the front row.
I'm Margaret Smith and I live at 4425 Old Brook Road in Reiner. And I just do want to preface this with, some of you are too far away from the mic and I can't hear back there. I guess maybe I'm getting old. Could you lean forward when you speak? I really do appreciate it. I'm just going to speak on two topics tonight. The first one is the county's recent acquisition of land in Reiner for what I think is being referred to as the ballpark. And then the second thing that I'd like to address the board about is the resolution that Virginia Riley just finished commenting on. But this, I want to focus on changing the zoning text in the district. This is not particularly the New River Valley meat coalition's exploration of site locations in and around the county and also in other counties. So I'll start with the first one. And this is something that I talked to Supervisor King about, that some of us would like to, maybe if there was some way the county could hold a community meeting in Reiner, just to find out what the citizens might be interested in. Forty acres was a lot of land and we could do a whole lot on it. And so before a plan is actually presented for public comment, residents might come up with some creative ideas about what to do with it. I know their ball fields may be slated and I know the firehouse is going to be on there. But I was hoping that there might be some way that that could happen. I know we don't have a community center out there, so that is a problem. Now, the resolution, I want to emphasize, excuse me, I want to go on record as emphasizing because I'm not sure how much the public has relative to information. This is not a request for rezoning, as you all know. The issue is the conflicting regulations and the possible unintended consequences as the ordinance is currently worded. And I have to take some of the responsibility for this ordinance, believe it or not, Mr. Burke probably knows, because I was on the tri-county, the grant-funded tri-county study to find out what things, this agricultural business and agricultural tourism, farmers, how the counties can encourage them, help them make more money because it is very difficult right now. And I was on a subcommittee when our previous planning director was here, who now has gone on to Africa as missionary. And we had a meeting early on. And I looked over after the meeting, I looked over at the county ordinance on, I was focusing in on this particular item, the abattoir or meat processing plant, meat packing plant, as the big egg calls them, they don't call themselves slaughterhouses. But at any rate, and I looked at it and said minimum five acres and it probably said then 400 feet setback. But until we started looking at this thing and placing it on a possible site, five acres sound like plenty to me and I would have never guessed that you cannot get a building on five acres if I've done my math right and a friend has done his math right. And so that is, and it may seem inconsequential, but I don't see how we can say, well, we're going to, you know, we're going to go by one regulation, but not the other. Plus, when I did the math, if I did it right, it's almost 20 acres. And that could pose some possible problems because that almost forces anyone who wants to put one in Montgomery County to be using a lagoon, I'm not sure what you call it, a norbit, I mean, but I'm talking big. Because you can't, it's hard enough to find sewer anywhere near in agriculture, anywhere near that you can hook up to. And so they're going to be forced into doing that. And I'm a land person and a water person and I'm for protecting the land and the water and the animals we raise to eat and the community. And so that's just, I just really wanted to stress that to you most of all. I'm out of town, right? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other individuals that would like to come forward? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public address. The next, I don't believe that there's any addendums. The next item is consent agenda. Is there a motion in regards to consent agenda?
Motion.
No.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Do we need to take a break? Are we good?
We're good.
Let's roll. Keep going? All right. Old business. The resolution approving the real estate agreement between Shaw Development LLC and the county of Montgomery, Virginia, and namely enter into a real estate agreement with Shaw Development in regards to 0.287 acre portion of the Motor Mile Park. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to know if anyone has ever, haven't heard the results of it, if they have, took a look at the parking area up there to know exactly what we've got. Because, you know, you've got things that I haven't heard in the looks of it is that the help, all the people that turn down beds and lost clothes and stuff, they got to have a place to park too. It can't just go on just the number of lights that are out there.
As I understand it, and Emily can correct me if I'm wrong, the current plan meets all of the parking regulations that we have in place. And I'm looking to her to make sure that I'm not misspeaking because occasionally I do.
We have a concept plan?
Remind him of that next time he's talking to you.
We have a concept plan that was initially shared with the board. What I shared with Marty earlier today was the applicant has provided a site plan that is now under review by our agency. So once we get through this review, we will know for sure. So the concept plan is really nothing more than a sketch sort of laid out on the area. This site plan does show everything engineered, so we will count each parking space. We'll look at the entrance, all those sorts of things.
And they'll be required to meet our parking regulations should something like that happen?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Does that answer?
Yeah, somewhat. I'm not sure exactly what you were saying there.
I think at this point in time, they still have to comply even after they purchase this portion of property. They still have to meet our zoning and planning requirements for parking and that factors in employees and guests.
With that said?
If it goes along that route.
With that said, how you going to know until it's done, already done and you've got those?
They have to get approval through the plan.
They can't get a building permit unless their plan meets those parking requirements.
So they must have them right now? You think that they, all of them's got one?
The plan that's been submitted has to meet the requirements of the county ordinance with regard to parking, or they can't be issued a permit to move forward with construction, which means they wouldn't.
Be able to move forward. If you can't get a building permit, you can't do anything.
You know, I have nothing against them being up there. My only thought is, if we go through this and down the rung somewhere, they get it built and there's 10, 12 people that don't have a place to park when we come in there to go to work, whose fault's that?
We'll need to look at our, I guess it would be ours as far as looking at our zoning regulations. If it turns out that we don't have enough parking, that would be something that we could address it later.
Ain't no addressing it later. It's either you build or you don't.
To the future, to the future. You're right.
Emily, she will make sure it's right.
Is there any other discussion?
Emily, she'll make it right.
Yes, she'll make it right.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
All right, next on our agenda, and I was looking at the agreements. I'm down to.
New Business.
Sorry about that. The next is Resolution, Board of Supervisors expressing the board's opposition to all expressions of hate.
No, no. You skipped A.
Oh, A, excuse me. Refer to the Planning Commission petition to amend the county's zoning ordinance pertaining to slaughterhouse regulations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. As liaison with the Planning Commission, I will tell you, I have some reservations about this. And maybe I'm the only one, I don't know if anybody else has done cattle farming. And now I haven't done a lot of it since I was about 1819.
No, I'm actually thinking of me as a cattle farmer and also you. There's some humor on both sides.
Well, you have to see me in my bib overalls and my coveralls at Southern Estates, but I go there on a regular basis. And then some days I go in my suit and they say, no, we're not going to let you carry that feed out. But I do have some reservations. When cattle are moved to a new location, they're scared. They make noises. They're lapped. And that is some of the reasoning why you want a large setback. Now, I don't know how they're planning on slaughtering the animals. The slaughterhouse I've been to, they shoot them in the head and then you have a device.
I don't know that.
But you have a device and you pick them up and you cut their throats. I mean, that is the process of butchering the meat. And that means if they're going through 10, 15 cattle a day, that's 10 or 15 shots. But you want the cows to be calm because the adrenaline can affect the meat. But this is something that there's a reason that you have large setbacks. And if we make this change, we're making a change and that may be, the majority of this county is A1. And this could have wide-ranging effects to the county if we make this change. And we can refer to the Planning Commission and let them do their work. And there's a lot of really bright people on there and they can work through this process. But I'll tell you, I have some serious reservations about this.
I will tell you one thing, you know, you're still going to have to have an S U P.
A what?
Special use permit. And since I've been talking to these people for a long time about this project that they want. And I've been investigating a lot of them, you know. A farmer says he takes his cows to the stockyard, makes $1,000 a head. That's on hoof. Off hoof, if he sells it to the public like one of these places here, he can make $2,800. He also said, well, another farmer said, he's trying to make money and keep his farms going. So he decided one year he's going to plant corn, produce corn. Cost him and his brother $23,000 to produce corn. Time it was said and done, he made, he sold it for $24,000. He made $1,000. The average farmer is going to lose 9% of their pay this year. 9%.
And I guess the way that I look at it is, are we finished? I'm sorry. Okay. The way that I look at it is, the Planning Commission is an advisory board to us. And I'm very comfortable with sending this to the Planning Commission and trusting in their ability to review it thoroughly, you know, do a site visit, et cetera, et cetera, whatever needs to be done to get to a point where they're comfortable making a recommendation to us. So I am in favor of sending it to them for review.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
No, I just agree with her. I think I'd like to hear what the Planning Commission has to say.
Well, just from the sheer wording of the heading on this thing, it appears is the only reason that we're even talking about it is because if there's public sewer, they're taking it up to.
Yeah. That's part of, yeah, the biggest part of it.
It makes me think the 400-foot setback was for that purpose. I know cattle make a lot of racket when you move them around and all that. I haven't heard any negative comments. I've got several emails and they've all been for that, so. I just don't know how much the public knows about this specific project. But at the same time, having it through the Planning Commission will help with community awareness as well.
Yeah.
Right. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Now, Subject B, Resolution of the Board of Supervisors expressing the board's opposition to all expressions of hatred and discrimination. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have something that I've prepared.
Okay.
Just take a moment. Bringing this resolution to the Board of Supervisors came out of an idea that I had in my last supervisor's report at our meeting on February the 8th. And given the current political climate, especially on a national level, many people throughout our great nation are feeling afraid, undervalued and vulnerable. So I asked myself if there was any action I could take in our community to foster a sense of security to those who have legitimate concerns for their rights, the rights of their family members and their futures. In light of the executive orders signed in late January barring residents from seven predominantly Muslim nations from traveling into the United States, the Virginia Tech Faculty Senate and Blacksburg's Town Council adopted resolutions that celebrate the history and importance of immigration in this country and in our communities. There have also been several local news stories in recent weeks about the work of the Blacksburg Refugee Partnership and their efforts to bring refugee families to our area. To date, our community has welcomed two families from Syria and one from Afghanistan. All three were fleeing war in their home countries. And on arrival, one of the family members told members of the Blacksburg Refugee Partnership that, quote, "This is the first time I have been treated like a human being in many years," end quote. It is incumbent upon us, the elected leaders of Montgomery County, to reiterate our position of nondiscrimination and intolerance of expressions of hatred towards our fellow man. While this resolution is not a call to action, nor does it provide any legal protections to marginalized members of our community, it does allow us to clearly convey a message of inclusion and celebration of diversity to all county residents. So I'm asking all of my colleagues to support this resolution tonight and to fully embrace and celebrate the wonderful diversity that makes Montgomery County a great place to live, work, go to school and raise our families.
Any other discussion?
Well. I grew up in the South in the days when discrimination, hate crimes, other things were considered normal behavior. I cannot believe that the day in which we live now, this many years from that time, that people are still hating other people because of religion, race, any gender, and not accepting people as fellow human beings and female human beings. I would say that anything that we can do in our own community which will help people understand, remember, we just had a situation about the Confederate flag. When I was in school, I mean, teaching and being a principal, those issues were still there. I can understand how parts of people's culture would lead them to a few things. But I cannot believe that people cannot be taught because I don't think I should have ever taught school if I didn't think that you could talk with children, talk with adults about values. if I didn't think that you could talk with children, talk with adults about values and about the importance of acceptance. And so, I certainly would not want to live in the days of the Salem witch trials. And I know that many of our families, we're all immigrants really, came to this country for the ability to practice religion the way that they felt it should be done, without having to be concerned. I'm also concerned that it's not just the color of your skin, but the religion that you practice. And to see the community centers of Jewish people, even as when I was in college, and I know you all don't want to hear a lecture, this is not a lecture, this is exactly how I feel about it. When I was in college, my dorm group of eight or 10 people, there was one, and I went to a school in the South that's not just a strict Southern school, and I'm not saying it's confined to the South because we've seen it everywhere, in every state, every locality. And I know that there was a Jewish girl in our group, and people didn't know how to accept her. They didn't know what to do or how to do it. You can't change everybody, that's for sure, but you can surely try and let people know that in our community, we do accept people, and that has nothing to do with people that commit crimes or anything else, but it has to do with accepting one another as people just as we are. So, I would say this is absolutely essential in our community to have something like this, and I thank you, April, for bringing that up and for what you've said tonight. I just wish I could say it as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
The way this is written, I mean, it's calling out Muslims and all this, I would like to see it say "all people."
And I was going to say, I've got a, I was going to ask about a friendly amendment.
I don't, I don't like it that it's naming a few, and also in here, I would like it to say "legal." Like, legal.
And in the, and so, I was going to ask April, and I'll ask Net, in paragraph 3, it says, and I'm in rejecting, excuse me, paragraph 4, where it says, "where it rejects all expressions of hatred toward," and I was wondering if you would accept individuals based on their gender, race, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identification, or national origin?
I think...
Well, the...
And because it specifically lists, as Mr. King pointed out, in paragraph 4, it says "towards Muslims," and rather than just single out an individual, and then as Ms. Perkins pointed out, there's been numerous, I guess, cemeteries that have been vandalized, Jewish cemeteries, where their headsends have been damaged and vandalized. And so, rather than simply say "one religious group include everybody..."
Well, and the reason that it's important to me, and I'm not rejecting the idea of a friendly amendment, but I do think it's important to express myself, the reason that it's important to me that Muslims are specifically named is because they are specifically targeted.
Right.
And...
And now, the Jewish people are also targeted. African-Americans have long been targeted, so I think, and right now, gender makes a big difference to a lot of people.
And that's, that was why I added the gender aspect of it as well.
Well, and it does say, the whole paragraph reads, "Whereas the Board of Supervisors rejects all expressions of hatred towards Muslim racial minorities, LGBTQ individuals, and immigrants across this country, and calls upon the community of Montgomery County, Virginia to make visitors and residents feel safe and welcome regardless of their race, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identification, or national origin."
And then, if you look down below, it talks about the same things, but it's, again, specifically...
Says Muslim.
Muslims.
It is important to me that Muslims are specifically recognized because they are specifically targeted.
And, and I guess that's where I, I'm willing to be all-inclusive, and say that it's wrong to discriminate against anyone based on their racial background, or their religion, or their national origin. And as far as illegal immigrants, absolutely. We are a country, and when I was growing up, we were taught by teachers like Ms. Perkins that we were a great melting pot, and that we were better stew because we had ingredients from all around the world. And at the same time, I know that there's folks that are worried about refugees, but I guess I'm still one of those folks who picks up hitchhikers. Now, my wife gets mad at me every time I do, and she's not in the car with me. I do it on my own. And yes, I don't have leather seats sometimes, and sometimes things, smells linger a little bit longer than others, but I try to think that maybe that person needs a little bit of help. And so, and frankly, as an American, I think on our best day, we're the sheepdog. We're looking out after the sheep, and on our worst day, we're maybe the wolf. But I don't want to ever see us be the sheep and living in fear all the time and giving up, whether it be a tragic event and we give up our Second Amendment rights, or if people want us to give up our First Amendment rights, or whether we give up our rights to counsel, I don't want to see us living in fear. I'd rather see us be that sheepdog. So, I could, I can't vote for it the way it is, but I will vote for it if it's more inclusive, that includes their gender, race, religion, sexual orientation, gender identification, or national origin. And that's something I can support. But I don't think singling out, especially when we know that, yes, there was the mosque that was attacked, but when we know that there are Jewish cemeteries that are being attacked...
And synagogues.
And synagogues.
Well, and I'll say that it's more important to me that the resolution passes than to let it hinge on one word and not pass. So, if the majority of us feel that that needs to be excluded in order for this resolution to pass, it's more important to me than the resolution passes in some iteration than not pass at all.
And like I said, I believe that the Muslim faith is included under religion...
Yes, of course.
...of all faiths. I'm not saying that we should exclude that in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I do think that religion is uppermost in our minds now because of that, but it's also, gender is there. There are many people who don't think that you can accept what certain lifestyles are. And I know that you can, and I found quite sure, in this day and age, if you look at the person, get to know the person, that's the most important thing, because first you start with the acceptance, not necessarily the lifestyle, but as that individual, and then you can work through to the lifestyle. And I think it's true, the same thing with Muslims. I think it's with Jews, or people of Jewish faith, or Jewish national origin, and I think it's with most anybody. There may be, and I remember being told too, as a young college student, a Therman that has stuck with me all of my life, "You may not like what the person does, but you can love the person." And so, that's kind of what I operate on.
That, that language is in paragraph 4, and then it's in that last paragraph, "Therefore, be it resolved," and it would go in individuals and expressions of hatred towards, and right before the words, the Muslim, insert individuals based on their gender...
All individuals.
All, all individuals based on their gender, race, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identification, or national origin. And I've got that language to help, and I would make that amend request if that would be accepted.
I can accept that, that's what I think.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, it's more important to me that the resolution passes in some form than fails because of a few words.
How long, how long has this Blacksburg Refugee Partnership, how long have they been going?
It's been going a long time.
Yeah, I don't know.
I want to say that, you know, I grew up in Blacksburg, and I want to say Lindsey West may have been a part of it 30, 40 years ago.
And I don't, I don't know the history of it, but I can say it's a combination of about a dozen faith-based organizations and about a dozen community-based organizations that don't have a religious affiliation. So, there's a significant number of community members that are working towards the goal of relocating thoroughly-vetted refugee families into our community.
So, that, was there an acceptance?
Yes.
And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Yes, with those amendments, and I've got that language if that will help staff. Next up is the County Attorney's Report. County Administrator's Report.
Two quick items this evening. I attended the Virginia Local Government Management Association Conference week before last, and at our business meeting, they recognized 10 local governments across Virginia that have been supportive of the Institute's email broadcast information system. This is something that the Institute sends out sometimes daily to local governments across the state requesting information on a variety of topics, and Montgomery County was recognized as one of the top 10 respondents to that email request. The email request, some days I drive department heads crazy because when they come in, I usually forward them to the appropriate department head, like Emily and others, to please respond, but we were recognized for our contributions to helping other local governments across the state, and I thought that was very nice. The only other thing to add is just don't forget to come back here next Monday night at 6 o'clock to hear the budget presentation.
Yay!
Yay.
Yeah.
That's all. Supervisor King?
I don't have no report, but I want to thank Craig and his staff for working on the budget. I know they, they get the phone calls from me and everybody else, and bless their hearts, they're doing the best they can with what we have. Thank you and your staff very much.
Hope you'll say that again next Monday night.
And welcome your little friend over to the county.
Supervisor Biggs, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, but I'll repeat again, she is at the NACO meeting, the National Association of Counties, and their legislative session in Washington, and again, I think this is the first meeting that she's missed in five years, so...
One thing Jennifer's been doing back there, Supervisor King recognized you, but you were so busy tweeting, I don't think you realized...
Oh, I thought she was asleep.
She's sitting back there tweeting, and what I was going to say is, when Chair Tuck said about Ms. Biggs not being here, I guarantee you, she's looking at every tweet you're sending out.
With that being said, she would have made her report then, so I'll move on to Supervisor Demott.
Just one item from Mr. Murray's public comment, speaking on the 401 Givens Lane project. I will investigate that. As I said during our meeting, I'm on the Housing Community Development Advisory Board, so I am happy to shoulder the burden of investigating if that project has changed.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any report.
Supervisor Creed?
One little thing, I went to a meeting with the MSWA, which is Montgomery Solid Waste Authority, earlier today. We were trying to see where the money was going, where it was going to stay, and this type thing, and it ends up, they're going to, or we as, means I'm there, I guess, I'm still a we. There will be a, not set in stone as a right yet, but it's going to be there, might as well be set in stone, a $0.50 per ton charge extra, more than, over and above what it has been being. So, I don't know exactly how many tons there is from out of the county.
I'll double-check. I think that Bill Long, that works in our General Services area, I think Alan Cummins, who's the director, had made him aware of that so we can make sure that's included in the budget, that that will, if it's not, it'll have some effect, but we'll make sure.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how many, and that's kind of an important thing, but I don't have it.
Supervisor Perkins?
Not really. Thank you very much.
And then, that leaves me, just me. It's been a long night. I would just, again, thank the Planning Commission. When they had the presentation from Virginia Tech, they had a lot of good questions. That is going to be able to help us to make a good decision in regards to the expansion potentially of the Smart Road, and I'm very thankful that there are those individuals who give up their time and sacrifice time away from their families and with the level of expertise that they have. And I also want to thank our planning staff in making sure to keep everybody on the right step, and I think a quarter of the meeting was the Emily Gibson Show this evening. So, that being said, this meeting's adjourned.
Absolutely.